Okay, we're gonna do the KPWA side first, those lanes about here for us to go with the interviews for the police. Yeah, we'll go ahead and call the order, call row.
Huckabee.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Uh, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, we're gonna do the KPWA side first.
We're gonna move to the KPWA side.
Do you hear that, Cornice? God made a motion to change from pound, pound.
To the KPWA side first.
You have a second.
I'll.
I'm a second.
Huckabee.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Okay, number three, discuss and approve all minutes for January thirteenth, two thousand twenty.
I'll make a motion here through those minutes. I think he does.
One second. Nobody, nobody.
Well, same with them.
Yeah.
Huckabee.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number four, discuss and approve all minutes for January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty special meeting.
I'm gonna go, we approve those comments.
Second.
Huckabee.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
It's good, number five, discuss and approve January two thousand twenty bills for water funds.
Oh, we don't have those bills in yet. So I don't know if we have a start for the present.
Yeah, we got.
We got the one.
I texted you. That's why she sent us.
Is that what that thing was?
Yes.
I couldn't see it.
Oh, we don't have all of them in because of the meeting being a, I mean, it's gonna be the case every month, so I have to estimate.
Didn't we pass that, didn't we pass that word? Would still pay those bills, would we pay the bills even?
They're on a budget. But, um, a month, I would have like meeting, we've got three days. I mean, we won't, we're always going, every month we're gonna have not all of them in the mail.
She was making it for the following Monday.
Yeah, so I have some of them, and that's that sheet I fact texted you.
It had mine in too late in the month of passing, I'm turning it, I come over there.
That's wrong.
Yeah, but I texted you on the bills.
Okay.
That's what that was.
I couldn't read it. Tried bringing that stuff over here.
I had, I had a question on my.
Do that.
Okay, where was it?
Paying bills.
Never mind, I was reading the, the Pasco County Sheriff. I was gonna ask how we were paying our water, but it's not, it's on the other one.
Okay.
Okay, Bill made the motion to pay the bills for January twenty twenty.
Oh, yes, with the draw call?
Yes.
Huckabee.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number six, discuss and approve January two thousand twenty bills for service funds.
I'm gonna do the proof, bills for service fund.
I'll second.
Huckabee.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number seven, discuss and vote to change a three hundred dollar deposit for customer water that is disconnected due to non-payment of bill. Notice should be included on all applications for water service and posted for standing, existing customers.
Uh, this was Doyle's idea. And we discussed it the other day.
Is it Doyle's idea?
Yeah, it was Doyle's idea.
Not the way it's worded though.
Um.
Not the way it's worded.
No, not the way it was worded, and I said Doyle, three hundred's a little too high, ain't it? And he said, yeah, might be. So I thought I put two hundred on there, because that's what he said, he said, well, I'll got two hundred, that's why it sounded better.
I had her to pull it today, and you did put three hundred in the way it's written, so, because the way it is, it's not.
Well, this is not gonna cut it, because three hundred's too much, not, like I said, I told him that.
Two hundred's too much.
If two hundred's too much.
Sure is.
We got, we got people that, that's on SSI, that's five hundred minus six dollars. I mean, you paid the two hundred, and then you put, add another hundred to it, they only got so much money for medicine, electric, and everything. Need to, need to give back to them, it's their money.
Right.
You're no use choking them.
Yeah, you're right. Like I was talking to him before, we've already put a deposit on this.
We already have a deposit.
Right, so that should be forfeited, and then maybe put in a small, to get the bet deposit back in, like twenty-five dollars a month, to get that back to where maybe a hundred and fifty dollars or whatever, but not choke them out like he says, don't choke them out, but.
You can't afford it, this time.
No, they can't afford it.
Right.
This is low income town.
Right.
We got a lot of single women living down here, and.
We have a lot of elderly.
And they only get one in, so. Thank you, we need, yeah, you probably want to.
You brush yourself.
Well, what I'm saying, uh, they really need to, they really need to think about what we put stuff like that on. Because they, they scared those old, older ladies down there that I've got, in the housing.
This would be scary.
Well, I wasn't thinking about that, and I'm sure Doyle wasn't either, we were just thinking about some of these. I think it's mostly the younger people, they're just too stinking lazy to work and pay their water bill, they're always behind, they never get caught up, nothing.
Well, I looked at the list, there's some, you know.
Very delinquent accounts.
I'm sure there's some people that do it, thing, but we could handle a lot of different weight.
I think if you're gonna have to, on the non-payments, just shut them off after so many days.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, it can be handled different than that.
But you have to. You have to charge a three hundred dollar deposit plus a seventy-five dollar reconnect fee.
Well, they said, I thought they said the day of a hundred and fifty to hook it up. That, that, hook it up.
It's a hundred and six.
No, they were wanting three hundred.
I know, but if they, just to go hook it up, I mean, turn it on.
And then seventy-five for.
No, that's seventy-five, that's seventy-five.
Seventy-five, I, I thought Doyle said it was a hundred and fifty.
For a new account.
That's about a fifty.
For a new one, it's a hundred and fifty dollar deposit. Right.
That's about a fifty minute job on one, sorry, there, take a lock off and turn it on.
And the hundred and fifty covers.
You can send out a notice saying that, that we now have a policy that if you have not paid your bill, and it is thirty days past due, it's gonna be cut off. Instead of letting them go a month, or two months, or three months.
Well, I can understand cutting off, but I'm talking about the three hundred, they've drawn no money.
Unless, unless they're by arrangements.
Oh, I agree, that's, I agree, that's not.
Whoever put that on, undoubtedly, they got plenty of money.
As, as a citizen, I think that that's too much.
Uh.
But I think there needs to be a policy for the disconnects.
I mean, you know, you don't gotta think again, we got a lot of other people, some people got a lot of money.
Well, we cut them off, there's no policy on when.
And also, another thing is, I went by like the electric, the electric company will give back their deposit if you've been doing it for so long. Now, if we're not returning that, that deposit, like again, this person forgot to pay at one of those innocent ones that doesn't have the money, okay, they lose their deposit, but maybe even.
We have to have so much amount of something to go back to their deposit. Deposit, rule, rule development.
We have to hope here.
And we're, we're gonna have a couple, probably a couple.
We have to hope for that rule development.
Oh, so you can't lose the return, but I'm saying they forfeit the deposit and then go back. So, I mean, you're not returning it, but.
As, I'm speaking as a citizen, I think there needs to be a disconnection policy that is published, that if you don't pay your bill, it's been so many days after. Everybody knows, they have never been paid. That. By the tenth, but it doesn't tell you how long you have until Doyle comes out and disconnects you.
Yeah, usually they, they're used to it.
Behind what?
Well, it's the tenth, but we don't have a policy that's for all those people that don't pay by the tenth, and there's quite a few of them, and there, there is repetitive, now speaking of accounts. There are recurring people, now I'm speaking as the water clerk, there are recurring customers that do not consistently pay their bill, and you're always, you're going to cut them off, I mean, you're almost cutting them off every month or two, or two or three months.
I say if you go back and check with your things, there's already been something done on it. I, I've been to several of them, and they, they've talked about cutting off and cutting on before you even shut them, and probably before these.
So.
There's something in there that's already there.
Well, I don't know what that policy is.
Well, I don't know either.
But, and it's, if there's a policy, it's not being followed, because it's not.
Well, no, it's not being followed, but there has been a policy.
It's not being followed, and it's not in the application that they sign when they get a new account, there's nothing in their application that they sign that says if they don't pay by a certain day, they're gonna cut off.
It has to be on the bottom of.
They've had that shut off, you know, it's a long time before, you know what you've been here for.
He said, disconnect will be paid.
It's not there anymore, and it's not on the application that they sign.
They cut that off there.
They took that off since I've been on here, because it was on the bottom.
I don't think it's there anymore.
Well, maybe we need to do a different.
The shut off notice.
That was, you're right, it's on the bottom, you can put it on the bottom.
It was on the bottom of the bill. Because it's if it wasn't paid by the twentieth of the month.
It wasn't.
It was still put on the bottom.
It was to be just subject to.
I can look at a bill, I think it says we don't send out shut off notices anymore.
Right.
We don't want to send out shut offs, because it's all so much postage.
It was a lot used to.
Yeah, because they used to be on the right bottom of it, it said, that don't mean that's a law.
But if it was on the bottom of the, it's subject to his, by the twentieth of the month.
It should be on there.
Yeah, I remember that being on there too.
It was on there.
If it's not on there anymore, it's.
So we need to.
But you.
You, we need to limit, because if we're not getting our deposits back, there is a deposit here for that person, so this should be eliminated altogether, but let everybody know there's a seventy-five dollar connection fee that has to be paid immediately, I mean, reconnect, it has to be paid immediately to get your water turned back on.
We don't wanna run nobody off here, or we don't want people coming here.
If they do that now, if it gets turned off, there's a seventy-five dollar reconnect.
Okay, so really, this doesn't.
No, it's not on there, we need to add it back.
We need to put that back on there.
It says what the due date is for payment, but it doesn't say when it's shut off.
It used to say after the twentieth of the month, it was subject to disconnect.
That's exactly what it used to say, and it, perhaps it's been a while.
Yeah, I don't know when it was taken off, I didn't know it was taken off.
It's been a while.
Take fifteen minutes, or don't take a lock off.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's not on there anymore.
The teachers doesn't get paid till the twentieth, so it's usually allowed for the teachers.
I wonder how long it's been off there. I think it's been quite a while since it's not been on.
I don't know how long it's been.
I haven't either, but it used to be on there, it's not changed.
If it, if they're due the tenth, you can make it due if they're not paying by the thirtieth.
That's a good place to.
Then it's subject to. If they're not paid by the.
He had right line.
Yeah, okay. Subject to, to put this.
Just on the agenda for the next two acts.
Well, that's already, that's already.
We can just do that then, okay.
It just needs to be added back, and you say it's the twentieth or the thirtieth, twenty days after the due date. Okay, so that make it the end of the month.
That's what, that's what, that's what.
That's what I said about.
Subject or, unless, um, unless arrangements.
We're on a different subject now, what do you think, what do you think?
Right, that's what I'm trying to get at, you.
What are we gonna do about that?
Uh, eliminate the deposit?
No. There's, there's a.
No, 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 for the reconnect, that three hundred dollars for people getting them turned off, you're gonna, we're gonna say no to that?
There's no elimination.
Are, are you gonna say, because you're saying three hundred?
This is just something to vote on, right, to do three hundred.
Yeah, they're gonna go on, if we don't.
Just saying no, that's what I'm saying, basically, I'm saying that wrong three hundred dollars, but yes, I'm saying, uh, are you gonna say?
Because you can't vote for money.
What, if somebody makes a motion in a second, then they're not making a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion that we.
I mean, if.
Take no action.
You can't take, you can't make a motion to take no action, because somehow it's worded.
I mean, okay, well, let's just take no action then.
Okay, that's what I was saying, the, the, it has to be a motion too.
Okay.
But we could all vote against it.
Right.
You can all vote against it.
Right.
We don't want to take a wrong one. We don't want to take no action one. Hey, number, number eight, discuss and vote on five hundred dollar fine for any theft of water meter or tampering with water service.
There's already.
There's already a fine for that.
The police said.
There is, there, it was put on, on, on the chief, so he's not gonna watch.
It's four ninety-nine ninety-nine, I believe is why I was told.
Well, that's five hundred, that'll work.
And it's also a felony.
And then tamper on the meter, what would that be?
Oh, this one guy stole a water meter from a vacant house and took it over to another vacant house.
If they stole it.
And installed it backwards.
So.
And then he calls for help. Yeah, I know who, I know who did it, and I know where it was at. And we, and if we've already got this, I guess it's already.
We, it's already.
I guess Doyle had forgotten that we already had this, because this was his idea too.
That's already in place, so.
Take no action.
I thought that was a fine.
All right.
Hey, number nine, open.
Have we come back from?
Not yet.
They don't want it.
Not yet. Number ten, new business.
I, um, I want to ask y'all something. I was watching TV the other night, HGTV, and Hometown was on, it's a big band and little girl, they redo houses in Mississippi a little town. And HGTV is having a contest, they want to redo a whole town.
Yeah, how interesting.
Wouldn't it be neat, I'm gonna write in Kyoto.
Okay, yeah, why not, didn't nobody know nothing? I thought the same thing, and I thought Beth will do that. I was like, Beth will do that.
I might need a little help, will you coordinate with me a little bit?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, you know, if we don't try, we won't get it.
That's true.
So, we probably won't get it, but you know what?
Yeah, you have to ask.
If you don't ask, you don't get it.
If you don't ask, you sure enough, you don't get it.
So, I don't, I don't know any more details than that, it was just a two-minute clip on the TV, and it was like, they didn't want to give you too much information, and, you know.
Is there a number or address or?
I can Google it, I'll Google it on.
I'll, I can, I can find that, but it wasn't on there, so.
Okay.
Um, I mean, um.
That one did.
But they, they, they wanna do, you know, and, and if you listen to their ad for that, she says she wants to start a wave.
It's called Hometown Takeover.
Well, that's the pre-op to this thing, I think.
Yeah.
But, you know what, I, 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 I drafted a letter and I've re-drafted it, re-drafted fourteen times, and, and my premise is, um, you know, it's, it once was, and now it isn't, and why can't it be, and let's hope it is, so.
The only worry on that one was being, a lot of these, the homeowners had to pay the bill, they did the design.
Well, we don't have any details on that yet, so.
That's absolutely, that's the only thing I can see, the backside on it.
So, you know what, they're probably able to deny it then, if they can, if they can.
Exactly, exactly.
So, but, you know, if we had half of it done.
Absolutely, I'm on your side, I'm just saying that's the only.
Main streets, isn't it, this dead stuff on main streets, you know.
That would help a hundred percent right there.
Sure, it would, just driving through, you know, we got the traffic coming through here.
We've got drunk people, we've got sorrows.
And, and, you know, school situation's changing, all this stuff, there's no housing, you know, we haven't done anything with the Indian thing, we've sat here and not done anything about it.
They're working on it.
Yeah, we are working on it. They, they're not placing any, it's just not.
They want.
They're not paying anything out. They're in, not in debt, but they're, I tell them because they're redoing or building that massive complex in Durant, that they're not really doing.
They're building all of those home facilities, I believe, uh, cell phone.
By the cell phone.
And they're gonna get some more, I thought, too.
You talking about donations or building?
Building, we're working on houses, we're working on that.
Can they get out more money?
Sharon got to donate. Yeah, they just, we brought some stuff to Sharon for her.
It's not gonna, they're just now putting up.
So it's.
We, we need to get off our area here and, and start, if you wanna do it, fine, it's a perfect time. It comes with no guarantees, but.
Are we still on the new business thing?
Yeah.
For KPWA.
Any water thing?
Okay, are we ready to adjourn this part?
Open.
Number eleven, adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I didn't say.
Huckabee.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Six fifty-one, we're gonna go to the town of Kyoto side now, so, uh, that's February twenty, two thousand twenty, call the order, call row.
Huckabee.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
So, number four, number four, discuss and approve all minutes for January thirteenth, two thousand twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Huckabee.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey. Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number five, discuss and approve all minutes for special meeting for January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty.
I'll check.
Huckabee.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number six, discuss and approve January two thousand twenty bills for general fund.
I'm moving to approve the general fund.
I ain't seen no bills.
That's the, on that phone, that's what doesn't.
On that phone.
That's what you said earlier, you made the motion on the water side to approve, I said, we didn't see them.
Okay, all right, so who made the motion?
Don did.
I'll second.
Where's your mind at tonight?
Huckabee.
Yeah.
On that thing I couldn't see?
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number seven, discuss and approve January two thousand twenty bills for street and alley fund. Second.
Y'all go too fast, slow down, bro.
Huckabee.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten. McCormick.
Yes.
Number eight, vote to go in executive session, say, as a title twenty-five OS session, three oh seven B, we'll discuss and the improvement unemployment, hiring, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, or. Exiting of any individual.
Resignation.
Resignation of any individual salary, public office of employee to discuss, to vote on hiring a reserve police officer and hiring part-time police officer.
Make a motion.
Second. My, I get blurry whenever I go to reading.
Huckabee. Burton's.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number nine, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, number nine, inter back in, vote to inter back to regular session.
I say we vote, I mean, inter back in the regular session.
You already did it?
She already did, and I was second.
Oh.
Dawn seconded it.
I'm behind you.
Huckabee.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Discuss, number ten, discuss and vote on hiring a reserve police officer.
I say we do it.
You remember that, that we hired Lanes?
Yes.
Man.
Yeah, we, we talked about it and everything.
David, we hired David Anderson as.
And we worship, but we're not even saying nothing.
As a reserve police officer for the town of Kyoto.
Yes, I like that motion, but we do that.
I'll second, huh?
Huckabee.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number eleven, discuss and vote on hiring part-time police officer.
Huckabee, you should take no action at this time.
All right, I'm taking no action on that one.
Oh, I was moving back to you, Tom.
She just sent you a message.
Turn off the three, and leave it to one.
Yeah.
Well, at least we got three, so we did have a choice anyway.
Number twelve, take, take action or return Don Burton's desk chair.
Give his dad gum chair back, I don't know.
One, I didn't want to take it without it being.
I ain't even.
Or make a motion that Don takes his.
Chair.
What is, he is that you want, to cut out.
If you think it, I'll bring it to you, just while I can get it out of here.
I will second that motion.
Huckabee.
Yes.
Burton.
I'll stay.
Carey.
He wants, what is it, your favorite?
Sweeten.
Yes.
My one broke it off.
McCormick.
Yes.
And number thirteen, old business.
Um, I got some things I wanted to ask if I could, um, it's about the feed mill, the road, have you had the opportunity to talk to the mill? To get that road taken care of, would, that would be under you, right?
That's what we're talking about today.
We talked about it today, we'll go down in the morning.
Okay, awesome, um.
Who's going down?
Me.
That's a good idea. That's what you was thinking about, then, when that, when. I've been, since we were talking about the two, you were gonna go.
The audit, has anybody know, because that was what's holding a lot of us.
It's going.
Uh, she, she has put it, she put it aside because there was other, more urgent places and things to audit, so she did not consider as urgent. So she said she'd get back to it at some point, hopefully at the beginning of February, this is the state audit, so.
Oh, no, I was talking about, is this the audit we need to get the things that we need to get?
Oh, oh, no, no, we, that was our special meeting, that was our special meeting.
We just done it, whether it was.
That was the special meeting.
So they voted yes to use the same auditor they had, so they.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out about.
She came, all the audits came here Thursday, we gave them all the stuff, they stayed here all day, and they scanned everything.
So that's all set and ready to go then, so we can send off to get them.
They got, they got everything going on that, so.
You know, there's some things the city needs, they need some patching material and.
Yeah, we know, that's what we talked about today, too.
Yeah, I mean, uh, that's one reason you're having trouble with this, uh, down here.
Yeah, we need to.
We're gonna put that on, wrap that down to put on the next.
There's two holes in my, on my hand horn, and that's on the city property. Well, Sixth Street up here. Well, I got three behind my car, and it's on city property. The first two blocks of Sixth Street are just going down the hill, it's shot.
I don't know what y'all use here, but the curtain used cold patch.
Yeah, it's, it's good.
And it held up a whole lot better than anything up there.
Well, it's something they're putting down here in front of there, that's worth it, you need to buy some hot mix collie, that's what.
And down there where Don's daughter lives, at her drive.
There's also a stop sign off on Burton, they've been put up.
The road, come up to them trees, they get stuck in that, and that's it. All the way down. We have nothing on that road, that puddle.
What's that, a stop sign?
Stop sign on Burton, is that, is that Burton in it?
Yes, it is. Somebody mow it down or what?
That is where.
Somebody cut it down?
No, that's where that semi cut that corner.
Oh, that semi took it out.
You got stop sign off, and they run it.
I'm stopped in, and where there's the stops.
A long time before I was here.
Um, this, this happened the other day, I was coming home from church, and the holes are so bad, I mean, bad.
All the way down.
And so, right, right there is super, you can't not pass there, the problem I ran into was, was I was trying to take a left, and people are trying, because I have to go slow.
Why the hole too big? Yeah, it's more. Yours is not, you got pretty bad.
I've had people who have all been around me, and I'm like, I really wish you were there, because it was bad.
I always got very good either.
You know, if you're patching all the holes, it's gonna get big, you know, that's why they're big.
This would be the second.
Well, I heard that we don't have the stuff to patch. I don't see nobody building.
Well, I mean, here, well, hey.
State, state side of the highway, I mean, this weather is eating weather.
Like, if they let me go this way. A whole lot. I'll be, I'm a whole.
Okay, let's move on, please.
Okay, I've got one, one thing on old business, uh.
Did you have any?
We have the bids on the air conditioner, we've got to do something with those for real.
She contacted them.
We need to have a special meeting where we can.
She contacted the guys that's.
To go ahead and do it, or?
Well.
No, to take and get their bids back in.
Well, I think she got the bid back in.
And the one from Makoshi agreed to do it, he was the boss.
But we, we have to do, we have to do that.
So we have to have a meeting to accept him.
Yeah.
And I think there's some more bids coming in, too.
Yeah, now, they are the ones, just to move the air conditioner off, then we got some bids for some nursing care.
And since. Are those ready also on the roof?
No. No, they didn't, they didn't show up today, did they?
We've not got those in.
Now, there's one that.
One showed up today.
Wants to meet with you, there's one that wants to meet with you, because they.
There was two wanting to meet with me today, but they didn't able to show up.
Well, the one I'm thinking about, I didn't schedule anything with you.
Okay.
But there was one that kind of looked at the roof today.
Oh, was there?
Just one, and there's supposed to be another at twelve, showed up at twelve thirty, but he never did show up.
And then there's one that wants to schedule with you, so we've got, still, we're still moving on the bids for the roof.
If we can get the.
How do you get those?
Apparently it's all sort of, but.
The thing is, change of orders, since the way the camera, you didn't put up, or we do need to put another camera. But we no longer have to put it, there, we're gonna put it on the ground.
So this is. I don't think you guys let Mr. Plona finish asking her questions, I think.
It's fine, um. Really? No, you, you are absolutely fine, um, I was really, uh, really actually having problems with this, it's probably new business. No, you're, you're absolutely fine, um, I was really, uh, really actually having problems with this, it's probably new business early. It's about the road going one way versus it the way it is. The road that's in front of my house on Stockton, the bridge is so narrow, it barely can sit one person. Everybody is going over the sides, trying to work with each other, and I was wondering if the town would think about doing one ways in certain roads.
Uh, you can't, you legally, in a way, you really can't.
You can in a city, you see in every city, there's one way, but I'm just saying.
The way it's been, it's residential streets and everything, and people will buck up to us.
No, we can't, we can't do that on that, that would be.
There would be so many people buck up to us on that, because then they'd be, end up getting taken from him all the time, the wreck.
Well, I understand, I understand, we're, we're in that now, I've got people going into, into the ditches just to try to get out, and the way the weather is, they're gonna get stuck.
The way it is now, it's a matter of.
We're trying just to get around each other, even this is.
No, no, we don't, Blackman Bridge.
Oh, come on, we did, I really. Yeah, you know exactly what I'm talking about, that, and it's true, it's true, it's true, but it's, I'm just sitting and thinking, this is not possible. I know, that's why I thought one way, I'm just trying to think of solutions that help.
Well, I guess somebody's gonna have to stop, let them cross the.
That's what we're gonna do is, is we get people coming up, here's the problem we get, we get people going, here comes another car, like, okay, how, I can't get over, 'cause there's too much damage over here to get back. And then you come like, oh, what am I gonna do with my news, so people are falling, she's gonna try to beat you before you hit to that bridge.
Sun or light, and they're gonna have a wreck.
Exactly.
Yeah, we could add that on new business.
That's why, I was thinking, this is more new business than it is old business.
Okay, number fourteen, new business?
The reason behind it is, it is a danger, the way things are now, but I, like you said, the danger of people being confused, because it's always been this way, I understand that. The residential area, uh, people can get around, but there's, you know, it's been like this forever, and I get it, but I'm trying to figure a way. The people are not going into other people's yards just to get around. I've got marks alongside, and I'm like, and because the roads aren't the best in some places, and believe it or not, we still get roads that they do again.
Thank God, is you had, you had that widen every street in this town.
Well, that's why I see.
We can't do it, it's not feasible.
Right, that's why I thought one way would be an option, because that way, I mean, it would be as safe as like anybody else.
Yeah, y'all see if they're by minehouse, we're just semi turn. That way, instead of coming down here and turning that way.
But I'm just trying to find, and get the option there for discussion, for y'all to discuss, and I hope we can make things a little bit better.
I don't, I don't see any.
I don't see a solution to it. Until somebody gets to killing it.
Well, let's hope that don't happen.
There's, there's. There's meaning to get past, I need this person out, and I'm like, I just pull it and let him come by, I'm put you, 'cause it's not worth it to me, so. That's.
Are you got your way?
On new business, I was supposed to bring up that ESA did vote last month to do, you're coming to do a park fundraiser, at some point that was mentioned during the spring. Um, so we thought we'd roll it into maybe Old Timer's Day and do the town dance on Thursday night down at the park at the fundraiser. That Old Timer's Day, um, the Thursday night street dance or whatever, move that down to the park.
Where they gonna dance at?
The pavilion.
Pavilion.
We, we never thought about that, but we're thinking now, I haven't even looked at the pavilion, but I'll go see.
It's concrete.
The idea was.
Not very big.
They got a road out there in front of us.
We could, it is a, it is a street dance, thank you, we can do that, if we need, if the pavilion's not big enough, we can walk off the road.
It's a street dance. And do a street dance.
Dance out the grass.
ESA.
We'll work that out.
ESA wanted to know if this, if the, the city council would handle the food and of that kind of thing, decide.
Play on raffles games, food.
Um.
Maybe a cornhole tournament, uh, I'm okay.
Hot dog, hot dog, they're easy, get easy stuff.
That's a good idea, 'cause we'll have people here that wouldn't have been here.
Well, yeah, and that's what it is like, and some people have said, you know, Old Timer's Day is just that morning thing, we need more things, we're like, yeah, you're kind of right, so, let's try to get some people.
Well.
Right.
We can take the money that's in the park.
Mm-hmm. By time they're gonna start.
What?
We'd be filming. Use the money that's in the park fun.
To buy some food, and then that would get rid of.
Well, then you can reimburse yourself when you, get vendors.
I thought Pat told me there was gonna be vendors.
Well, I'd go, I'd all go back into the park funding.
I thought Pat told me there's gonna be some vendors, food vendors there.
No.
Yeah, I think it's true.
I was told to ask you guys.
At Old Timer's Day, there is.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna do the food.
But not, but, but, Pat was telling me, Pat was telling me about.
For Old Timer's Day.
No, that'll be up on Main Street, though.
That'd be up here on Main Street, on Old Timer's Day on Saturday, but this is Thursday night.
Pat was telling me about the fundraiser down at the park. Well, she is one day.
No, I'm more confused, 'cause the whole point was to raise money for the town, so we can have vendors come in and make money off of it.
Right.
And we don't, the council doesn't vote on anything regarding the park.
Now, there were talks about maybe, we discussed maybe like other vendors for craft or something to come in and pay a booth fee, but it wouldn't have been for anything that the ESA or town was raising money on, such as games, food, or raffles.
So if anybody wants to set up some kind of booth or food, it's just up to them?
No, we're, I don't think we're gonna allow food to be set up.
It's like the whole fundraiser was.
Because we need to, we need the town park to get the money, not the vendor.
Now, now, they can on Saturday. They can on Saturday.
Yeah, Saturday, everybody, anybody can come do it.
This is a different day, it's not, like Thursday night, they wanna do a street dance, and then, I mean, we'll have people. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, she, yeah, but.
She was just thinking that Pat had said they were gonna have food vendors down there.
Still have like. Oh, and, oh, on the Thursday.
That's our, that's our passion there.
Well, one thing, I know that, uh, we're, we're coaching on fire department, there's law, and some of the other places that.
We can probably get some.
We had Killward, which donated a hall, and not Killward at all.
True.
Killward's not, though.
Uh, Park Card Gill.
Uh.
We donated halls and. Uh, Stigard.
That's not about it, uh, I know Killward, Walmart's got ton of cards to get some money from now.
And Walmart.
They used to give us money for everything, and they don't.
Buy stuff with.
But the Killward, it's the Killwards and Stigard, um, they, they do donate a lot of stuff, so they could donate.
And I think the top value butcher shop is good too, they're, I think they're good to donate.
Who?
They are. The top value butcher shop.
If we get some of the businesses in town.
But I mean, that's. What we're saying is, is, we have plenty of time to get going now on it, so line up your donations, decide what you wanna do.
Yeah, we all, yeah, we would donate them.
That's first of all. I think we would have to give money on my corner.
Will, uh, will the city be working down our window?
You what?
You wouldn't want our product.
The city will be working down the window.
Yeah, we're in the same boat, we're in the same boat.
So it's a big combination, the city.
Even you. You can do it on your.
Well, the city wanted to do something, and they wanted, we were gonna have a spring, an Easter thing, but, you know.
We would have a lot of people, because the one people are.
When we have the captive audience, we have all the extra people in town, they can give their money here, you know, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, we offer free product, we offer a lot of them.
Yeah, there's a few vendors would love us, it's a shame, but.
Oh, free product.
What kind of a county do you? I think it's our cash.
Okay.
No, thank you, I don't want it.
I'm moving to Germany.
Oh, yeah, that's a lot of things.
I'll second that.
What was it?
Was she done?
Yeah, I'm done, sorry.
Number nine, you in German?
Yes.
I'll talk to you about that.
Burton.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.